Good afternoon. I'd like to call us back into order. We're now on report to select committees, Congresswoman Good Fox.
Thank you. Speaker, roles, ethics, and engrossment. Regarding Bill Number ONCA 2537, an act to amend ONCA 2475, to provide a supplemental appropriation to the executive branch in the amount of $2,851,590 of nontribal funds, and to establish an alternate effective date, the sponsor is Congresswoman Rebar. Final committee action do pass as properly engrossed with yes votes from Big Horse and Good Fox and one absent King. We met regarding Bill Number ONCA 2539, an act to amend ONCA 2473 to provide supplemental appropriations to the executive branch in the amount of $3,309,700, and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Rebar. Final committee action do pass as properly engrossed with yes votes from Big Horse and Good Fox and one absent King. We met regarding Bill Number ONCA 2540, an act to amend the tobacco tax code to include the tobacco compact tax to state the distribution of the tribal portion of the tobacco compact tax, to repeal the tobacco tax relief fund and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Whitehorn. Final committee action do pass as properly engrossed with yes votes from Big Horse and Good Fox and one absent King. We met regarding Bill Number ONCA 2541, an act to authorize and appropriate $480,200 to the Osage Nation Property Improvement Fund and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Rebar. Final committee action do pass as properly engrossed with yes votes from Big Horse and Good Fox and one absent King. We met regarding Resolution ONCR 2505, a resolution to support the Osage Nation's membership in the coalition of large tribes. The sponsor is Congresswoman Rebar. The final committee action do pass as properly engrossed with yes votes from Big Horse and Good Fox and one absent King. We met regarding Resolution ONCR 25-06, a resolution to approve the Office of Fiscal Performance and Review Annual Audit Plan for fiscal year 2025, submitted by Moss Adams. The sponsor is Congressman Hamilton. Final committee action do pass as properly engrossed. Yes votes from Big Horse and Good Fox, one absent King. And lastly, we met regarding Resolution Number ONCR 25-07, a resolution to denounce the United States federal government's disregard for the sovereign status of the Osage Nation as is evident by acting on inherent trust functions without consultation or notice. The sponsor is Congresswoman Whitehorn. Co-sponsors: John Maker, Jody Rebar, and Brandy Lemon. Final committee action do pass as properly engrossed. Yes votes from Big Horse and Good Fox, one absent King. Thank you.
Thank you, Congresswoman. We are now on bills and resolutions on third reading. First, ONCA 2537, an act to amend ONCA 2475 to provide supplemental appropriations to the executive branch in the amount of $2,851,590 of nontribal funds and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Rebar. How do you wish to proceed?
I'll close.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against? Hearing none, sponsor, you have the floor.
I'll waive my time.
The question is, shall ONCA 2537 pass? Roll call, please.
Congresswoman Redcorn?
Yes.
Congresswoman Rebar?
Yes.
Congressman Tillman?
Yes.
Congresswoman Whitehorn?
Yes.
Congressman Big Horse?
Yes.
Congresswoman Good Fox?
Yes.
Second Speaker, Hamilton?
Yes.
Congresswoman Lemon?
Yes.
Congressman Maker?
Yes.
Congressman Potts?
Yes.
Speaker Shaw?
Yes. ONCA 2537 passes. There is an alternate effective date. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, please say no. The alternate effective date passes. ONCA 2537 will be advanced to enrollment. ONCA 2539, an act to amend ONCA 2473 to provide supplemental appropriations to the executive branch in the amount of $3,309,700, and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Rebar. Sponsor, how do you wish to proceed?
I'll close.
Would anyone else like to speak for or against ONCA 2539?
Hearing none, sponsor, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Speaker. Thank you, Congress, and I just want to thank our Appropriations Committee and all of the work that we did working on this bill. This is a tribal request that came down. And in committee, we worked tirelessly on trying to amend down some of the requests, but working with the executive branch to do so. And in that, we were able to work with the Attorney General's office so that they could provide a budget mod to meet their request. And so we did that in committee. We also addressed the cap asset section in which we reduced the amount of the the internal switch in the generator. But we also had to leave the biggest request, which is the amount of 3.2 for the IT situation that we face. And we also, there was a request for an increase in the sovereignty day budget to the tune of $30,000. And so I just want the committee to be aware that when we started out early in session, there was about $4.3 million in requests. And with the work of the Appropriations Committee, we were able to reduce that by working with executive by $509,000. And so this request will total about 3.7. At the end of session, we should have close to about 1.98 available. Thank you.
The question is, shall ONCA 2539 pass? Roll call, please.
Congresswoman Rebar?
Yes.
Congressman Tillman?
Yes.
Congresswoman Whitehorn?
No.
Congressman Big Horse?
Yes.
Congresswoman Good Fox?
No.
Second Speaker, Hamilton?
Yes.
Congresswoman Lemon?
Yes.
Congressman Maker?
Yes.
Congressman Potts?
No.
Congresswoman Redcorn?
No.
Speaker Shaw?
Yes. ONCA 2539 passes. There is an alternate effective date. All those in favor of the alternate effective date, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, please say no. ONCA will be, ONCA 2539 will be advanced to enrollment. ONCA 2540, an act to amend the tobacco tax code to include the tobacco compact tax to state the distribution of the tribal portion of the tobacco compact tax, to repeal the tobacco tax relief fund and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Whitehorn. How do you wish to proceed?
I'll split my time.
Madam Speaker, members of Congress, we worked hard on this bill. We had two long committee meetings. So briefly, in the beginning, and I'll wait to hear if you guys have any debate. I've been very upfront. What I'm doing with this bill is, as of January, no, February 10th, maybe, there was an opinion from the Attorney General that the tobacco tax relief fund had ended. And then a notification shortly thereafter went out to the retailers that bring in our tax revenue on tobacco, that the fund was dissolved and that their tax rate now was going to be $10.15. Their tax rate was $1.50 before that. Then I asked the budget analyst to figure that out. And the rate of change in that is 577... Where did I have that at? I think I grabbed the wrong one. I think it was 500, yeah, 570 cent percent increase in what they paid in their tax portion of the rebate that they left here at the nation. So the reason I filed this bill is because I believe that's a big change for any local business to have to absorb that they're not used to. I know that we're in negotiations for a compact currently. This Congress has extended that negotiation period with the state of Oklahoma until March 31st. So this was my effort to keep things on the same keel that we had been operating on for the past 11 years to the people that paid the tobacco tax into the Osage Nation until we get a new compact and we can look at it. There are some features in this bill. One of the features that we negotiated and amended in in committee was that this, when we get a new compact, this piece of legislation, we will reconsider. We will reconsider what we're doing at the time. So when a new compact comes, we'll have to come back and take a look at this. But we should, anyway. So there were other different negotiations and compromises made between this body. And I'm glad that we had the time to discuss it. And I'll bid close if anybody else has anything else to say. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against ONCA 2540? Congresswoman Redcorn.
Thank you, Speaker. It's interesting how you say that, that wish to speak for or against, because I think I'll probably do both. I, here's where I land on it. I am, and I don't even think you can say I land anywhere. I have issues with a number of things and I agree with a number of things. I appreciate the statement that this was an attempt to continue, I don't want to call it the status quo, but the way that we were doing things before, when we had, before we had this extension on the compact and before the tax relief fund expired, I can appreciate that this is an attempt to continue that behavior, to ensure that our retailers receive a portion of this tax rebate in the season when the tax relief fund has expired. I can appreciate that attempt. This, and I know in committee, we went back and forth because you changed the tax rate when you, when this piece of legislation was presented. So then I take issue with the fact that it doesn't actually keep the status quo. It actually changed the tax rates. And so I, my first issue is I don't like the dollar amount. I don't like dollar amounts in it at all. I think percentages are a much safer place to be. That's my first primary complaint. And that doesn't have to do with the concept or the notion of rebating any of this tax back to the retailers. That's not the issue. The issue for me is, I think in the season that we're in without an agreed-upon negotiated compact, a dollar amount isn't a safe place to be. And I appreciate, so then here's where I go back to the other side. I can appreciate the fact that we've all agreed that we're going to come back and visit this again when we do have a new compact. So makes me feel better that the dollar amount isn't set in stone because we're going to come back and revisit this. So I, I don't appreciate the change in language in the bill. I don't, I don't think that changing the language in it accomplishes maybe what it was set out to do. I feel like it adds more muddiness to the water rather than clarifying it, from my perspective, just on how I read and interpret the law. And I have some deeper theological concerns about it. I guess you, you know, fundamental concerns about just the whole, the whole practice of it and the whole, the whole thing of it in general that I can voice later when we are talking about, when we actually come back to the table and do this right. Because I feel like what this was done right now, the way this has felt to me from the beginning is that we've been hasty in an effort to take care of our retailers. And I can appreciate wanting to take care of our retailers in this season. But I feel like when we do hasty work like that, sometimes we're a little sloppy about it. And we want to get something out to do the right thing, but it means that we got to come back and do more work. And I don't, I don't like writing a bill knowing that it's going to need future work. I don't like voting on something that we don't, we know we're going to have to come back and revisit. I wish that we could have done this right the first time. And I've said from the beginning, I think this, this is poorly placed as far as timing. Again, I don't, the fundamentals of doing it isn't the issue for me. Doing this in the season while we're negotiating a new compact is the thing that I take issue with. We are, we don't know what we're going to get, yet we're amending our tax code in the middle of it. And that's the part I take issue with. It makes me very uncomfortable considering the circumstance with the Oklahoma government that we're in. We just don't know what we're going to get. So anyway, that's, I don't know how I'm going to vote on this. I really don't. And it isn't, if I vote no, it isn't because I don't want to rebate anything back to our retailers. It's not that. It's because I don't agree with the way that the law is written. And I don't like the dollar amounts and I don't like the timing. And if I vote yes, it will be because I want to ensure that we are able to continue, because this was an extension of our, the thought processes that we are going to extend the behaviors of our current compact when we voted to extend our current compact, then I can get behind the idea that we're going to continue our behaviors with our retailers in that interim timeframe with the idea that we're going to come back. So that's where my head is. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Hearing none, sponsor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, members of Congress. I think Congresswoman Redcorn gave a really good example about how many issues and threads can be pulled out of this, this piece of legislation. And like I said, it was an attempt to keep a status quo as far as the businesses that bring our tax in come in until a new compact is passed. Congressman King gave some language that has been amended in. And I believe that it assures that we're going to come back and work on this when we have a new compact. And I'm happy to do that, and we are going to do that. So if we don't like the language, if we don't like that it's a dollar amount, set percentage, regular, the Hunka session begins March 31st. What this will do is that we'll go back and it will retro back the, the amount that, or the rebate in the form of tax, the tax revenue coming back. So it will, and then it'll end when, when we have a new compact tax. Also, I did want to mention, too, that the rate of tax, as Congresswoman Redcorn mentioned, does change. The tax rate for 2026 will be elevated by $135,000 and some change annually. What's going to be collected here in '25, it's going to be elevated as well because the tax rate in this bill goes from $1.50 to $2.25 for a carton of cigarettes. So, but all that's subject to change. We get to do that work here in this Congress. And I would urge you to vote on this to keep revenue coming in to the Osage Nation coffers from tobacco taxes. And without it, we, I mean, we just won't have it. If, if our businesses have to close in our communities, we just won't have that revenue. I'd like to say one more thing, too. To me, this just is not about the retailers or the tax commission. It's about the Osage people. I did a brief poll. And our, our smoke shops, on a daily average, serve 1,537 customers throughout the Osage Nation. So we, here at the nation, collect taxes because that business happens, because those 1,537 customers frequent these businesses. If these businesses don't have the ability to stay open, and a couple of them are hurting right now because they are not used to paying a $10.15 tax instead of a $1.50 tax. So they are in threat of having to close their doors. So, and then we'd get no tax revenue and we aren't serving the people in the community, or they aren't serving the people in our communities. We're stopping economic development. So thank you. I urge you to vote yes. I think we worked really hard and we made compromises and we came to a place that we could all agree on. And we'll have a new compact soon, I think. Thank you.
The question is, shall ONCA 2540 pass?
Congressman Tillman?
Yes.
Congresswoman Whitehorn?
Yes.
Congressman Big Horse?
Yes.
Congresswoman Good Fox?
Yes.
Second Speaker, Hamilton?
Yes.
Congresswoman Lemon?
Yes.
Congressman Maker?
Yes.
Congressman Potts?
Yes.
Congresswoman Redcorn?
Yes.
Congresswoman Rebar?
Obstein.
Speaker Shaw?
Yes. ONCA 2540 passes. There is an alternate effective date. All those in favor of the alternate effective date, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, please say no. Alternate effective date passes. ONCA 2540 will be advanced to enrollment. ONCA 2541, an act to authorize and appropriate $480,200 to the Osage Nation Property Improvement Fund and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Rebar. Congresswoman, how do you wish to proceed?
I'll close.
Are there any other members who would like to speak for or against?
Hearing none, sponsor, you have the floor.
I'll waive my time.
The question is, shall ONCA 2541 pass?
Congresswoman Whitehorn?
Yes.
Congressman Big Horse?
Yes.
Congresswoman Good Fox?
Yes.
Second Speaker, Hamilton?
Yes.
Congresswoman Lemon?
Yes.
Congressman Maker?
Yes.
Congressman Potts?
Yes.
Congresswoman Redcorn?
Yes.
Congresswoman Rebar?
Yes.
Congressman Tillman?
Yes.
Speaker Shaw?
Yes. ONCA 2541 passes. There is an alternate effective date. All those in favor of the alternate effective date, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, please say no. The alternate effective date passes. ONCA 2541 will be advanced to enrollment. ONCR 2505, a resolution to support the Osage Nation's membership in the coalition of large tribes or cult. The sponsor is Congresswoman Rebar. Sponsor, how do you wish to proceed?
I'll close.
Are there any members who would like to speak for or against?
Hearing none, sponsor, you have the floor.
I'll waive my time.
The question is, shall ONCR 2505 pass? Clark?
Congressman Big Horse?
Yes.
Congresswoman Good Fox?
Yes.
Second Speaker, Hamilton?
Yes.
Congresswoman Lemon?
Yes.
Congressman Maker?
Yes.
Congressman Potts?
Yes.
Congresswoman Redcorn?
Yes.
Congresswoman Rebar?
Yes.
Congressman Tillman?
Yes.
Congresswoman Whitehorn?
Yes.
Speaker Shaw?
Yes. ONCR 2505 passes and will be advanced to enrollment. ONCR 2506, a resolution to approve the Office of Fiscal Performance and Review Annual Audit Plan for fiscal year 2025, submitted by Moss Adams. The sponsor is Congressman Hamilton. How do you wish to proceed?
I'll close.
Would any other members like to speak for or against?
Sponsor, you have the floor.
I'll waive my time.
The question is, shall ONCR 2506 pass? Roll call, please.
Congresswoman Good Fox?
Yes.
Second Speaker, Hamilton?
Yes.
Congresswoman Lemon?
Yes.
Congressman Maker?
Yes.
Congressman Potts?
Yes.
Congresswoman Redcorn?
Yes.
Congresswoman Rebar?
Yes.
Congressman Tillman?
Yes.
Congresswoman Whitehorn?
Yes.
Congressman Big Horse?
Yes.
Speaker Shaw?
Yes. ONCR 2506 passes and will be advanced to enrollment. ONCR 2507, a resolution to denounce the United States federal government's disregard for the sovereign status of the Osage Nation as is evident by acting on inherent trust functions without consultation or notice. The sponsor is Congresswoman Whitehorn. How do you wish to proceed? do you wish to proceed?
Close.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak for or against? Hearing none, sponsor, you have the floor.
I'll waive my time.
The question is, shall ONCR 2507 pass?
Second Speaker Hamilton?
Yes.
Congresswoman Lemon?
Yes.
Congressman Maker?
Yes.
Congressman Potts?
Yes.
Congresswoman Redcorn?
Yes.
Congresswoman Reevarde?
Yes.
Congressman Tillman?
Yes.
Congresswoman Whitehorn?
Yes.
Congressman Big Horse?
Yes.
Congresswoman Good Fox?
Yes.
Speaker Shaw?
Yes. ONCR 2507 passes and will be advanced to enrollment. We are now on adjournment. Without objection, we will adjourn the session.